Okay, we live. Okay, this is Awkward Currents with Awkward Entertainment. And we're gonna be checking out a video from WFFA. It's gonna be about a city councilman who stated a proclamation. And this crazy rhetoric coming from the city councilman. Then we're gonna check out one other video pertaining to, uh, Tiana Jefferson. So let's get going. Let me go over to YouTube. Okay. So his name is Anthony. Let's just say La Anthony, because I can't pronounce his, uh, second, his first name. Okay, let me pull this up on my second device. But again, um, a Tatiana nephew claims in his report, he saw her point a gun at Aaron Dean through the window. And that's when the officer shot through the window at Tatiana. So also want to look at what the defense is going to be for, um, Aaron Dean. Like he gonna say, "I fear for my life. I saw a gun." Just that and third. I'm also curious what the prosecution is going to say. How they're gonna get him convicted of murder? So if he's gonna... So if he's gonna proclaim, you know, he saw the gun, he got scared and he shot. You know, I don't know if that's a good defense. A lot of us don't think that's a good defense because he shot her in her house. He was snooping around. He wasn't the only one snooping, but he was snooping around with him and his boys. All right, let's get into this video about what the city councilman said. And this to me is like a precursor to maybe they want some mass riots going on in Texas. They'll listen to what he say. Or maybe they gonna bring in some paid protesters to do some crazy stuff. You never know, but let's play the video.
Councilman tweeted, "We, the community, are declaring and proclaiming a black state of emergency here in Texas. We also declare a level travel advisory. Do not travel here..."
Let me take off this quote caption, but "a black state of emergency"? Hold on. And "we, the people," you the only one proclaiming this yourself, dude. A black state of emergency. Let's go read that one more time. Okay, I'm gonna break down that statement, how I see it being said. "We, the community," which is him himself and whoever came up with this idea to write this with him. "Declare and proclaiming a black state of emergency." Like, like black people haven't been declaring a state of emergency for years. But, uh, "here in Texas, we also declare a level travel advisory. Do not travel here to Texas." Saying, "Don't travel there to Texas," meaning the government or whosoever has some stuff coming down a pipeline in Texas. Is there gonna be another Ferguson in Texas? Now, what's going down? This ma- this right here makes me think they have something serious planned in Texas. I'm not talking about the citizens or the regular old person. I'm, I'm talking about the ones in charge. And I'm talking about the wicked ones in charge, whether they be black or white. So this is not a good thing that I'm reading. Like not for anyone. Let me read it one more time. "We, the community, are declaring and proclaiming a black state of emergency here in Texas. We also declare a travel advisory, meaning they don't want nobody coming to Texas. Do not travel here to Texas." Sad note, if your presidents are corrupt, then your councilmen are corrupt. Don't care what color they are. You know, this could be used to do damage to the American people as a whole. Uh, for you racist, for you black racist and for you white racist. Don't look at black racist, because I know you're racist towards whites and your mind is corrupt. And you have no sense. Um, don't look at this as a good thing that he said, because this could be very bad if this is acted on by corrupt leadership. Well, yeah, it is. It's ridiculous for him to be in that position and not know how to write on Facebook or whatever he posted. Like he, he's not very good at talking to the people if you're gonna put some bull crap like that out. He's not very wise and knowledgeable if he gonna put something like that out. Because it does seem like he's trying to incite people or it seems like he's telling us that somebody's going to incite people, whether it be real or not. Going to incite people. To maybe be another Ferguson or whatever Watts riot. Or however. They may do this if they're gonna plan out a riot. He says, "We just want to live." Yeah, everybody wants to live, black, white, orange. And nobody want to get shot by the cops on while checking their property for burglars. And cops shouldn't be going around shooting people. Period. Not in situations like that. Well, yeah, it is despicable to call it a war by police on black and brown people. It's kind of ridiculous, because the police themselves are black and brown. So he's trying to stir some pot. To me, they're sending a signal to whoever's catching these signals, they're sending it to you if you ever keeping up with this. It makes no sense for him to have said this. He could've said it a better way. He could've left the race thing out, because that's, that's totally fabricated. He fabricated, "It's a race war" by the police against black and brown. He fabricated that. I don't know who told him to say that, but like I said, politicians are corrupt. If your president is corrupt, I'm pretty sure your councilmen's are corrupt. And all coons and all sellouts. I don't care what color you are or they are. They can be coons and sellouts and look like, um, they can be blue and be sellout. And I can't sit by idly and watch my people be slaughtered and not have anything to say about it. So you gonna say anything about the white guy that was shot by police in his home? Not gonna say nothing about any of those cases? Okay. Say, "Yo, people, yo, people, you, you're, you're the humans. You're all humans. Yo, people." Like I preached in my other videos, "Stop being racist. Stop being racist. Stop seeing race." Now let go of this history of race and racism and just call yourself humans. Because you're born, once again, going back to Malcolm X, you're born into a racist society. So how do you defeat that? You stop spreading racism and stop being racist and really wake up. These black people try to talk like they woke and you're not woke. Like you're sleeping with the devil with all this racism, racism. And all this hate and all this ignorance coming off your lips. And not about the part of the cop shooting the woman at home. I'm, I'm talking about all the other junk you see in the black community or the so-called black conscious community. That's just trash. It's trash. So on the point of him being an activist, he could be an activist or a councilman. You can be a councilman and activist at the same time. I mean, you're in a pers- you're in a position of leadership. Of course, you are activist if you're in a position of leader, leadership. You're gonna be an activist. Um, that, that kind of goes hand in hand to me. If you're a councilman, you're an activist also in some way, shape or form. That goes hand in hand. Uh, let me rewind. One more point I want to make. His proclamation is not a call for war on police. Maybe if you go back and read it, it's, it's, it's very ignorant to me for him to say that. He could've stated thing, things a lot better. We never heard Barack Obama say anything like that, even though I don't, um, appreciate a Barack Obama like that, right? He wasn't the best president, let's just say that. Like you don't go saying ignorant shit like, "There's a race war the police have started against black and brown people." Because you are in a position of leadership as a councilman. It's kind of stupid. Especially when you got black and brown officers. Okay, next, we're gonna take this video over to Aaron Dean. And Aaron Dean defense, because I'm wondering what his defense is gonna be. So let's go check out a video about that.
...his home. Her defense was honest mistake. She was not able to prove that defense and she was found guilty and sentenced to 10 years. The, the maximum sentence range, the sentence range for murder in Texas, at least after the government proved him guilty, he would have to prove...
Okay, this is Judge Andrew. He's gonna be, um, talking about the possible defense Aaron Dean, Officer Aaron Dean could have or come up with. So we're gonna listen to him for a couple of minutes. And I'm gonna stop and commentate. "Her defense was honest mistake and she was not able to prove that." Oh, that was a dumb defense. That was a dumb trial all around. Of course, that's not a defense to shooting somebody in their own home. So she got 10 years. That's why she got 10 years. That's why you saw all that hugging in that movie, the Amber Gagga movie. But, um, his defense is gonna be, of course, he saw a gun. He feared for his life. And their offense, the prosecution should state he didn't follow protocols. And of course, he murdered somebody, but the prosecution gone have to, they got their hands, um, they got their work cut out for them. In this case, they can have their work cut out for them. Let's continue. Now, this was recorded before the information about the nephew seeing her point a gun at the window. So you see how they're leading the narrative and how they're telling you what it's going to be before it happens. So I mean, you, you see how they're telling you the script before the details itself come out as it was actually that. Because when this was recorded, they should've been had the, um, report out about her having a gun. That, that should've been out a couple of days ago when this came out or whenever this came out. So again, in this interview, they do not know yet that she had a gun. Which I don't know how they don't know she had a gun. As many connections the news supposed to have. You know, you don't know the first day, the first day reported that she had a gun pointing at the window. You don't, you didn't know that the first day? So they re- they released body count, but they didn't release the details about her having a gun. Because that night when the police came, the, um, take statements from the nephew, that's when he said, the same night. He said he saw her point a gun at the window. So the day the body count was released should've been the day they also released the information about her pointing a gun at the window. It makes sense? But they didn't release the information the same day. They waited a day apart or two. Okay, play the video. And prosecution has to argue that if this goes to court, because I'm not sure if this going to court or not. If this goes to court, prosecution has to argue that the protocols he didn't follow. They get a conviction of murder. Now hopefully, they're charging with manslaughter too, like they did Amber Gagga, because it's just murder. And they're charging with manslaughter and murder, murder. I want to back up a little. Could they gonna say something about her having something in her hand? But yet, at this point in time, they don't know about the report of her having a gun in her hand. And part of this breakdown is for the real woke people and not the woke racist. I mean, half-assed woke. Racist blacks and whites. Let's rewind this. Okay, so she has something in her hand. And perhaps that... The way he said that, that's insu- that's, that right there should tell you that they know more than they're leading on. That they know more than they're leading on. So... But that right there tells you also, this was recorded before the information about, um, her having a gun. So let's continue. So I guess his defense is gonna be her pointing a gun. The offense is gonna be him doing improper procedures. And I don't know what else after that. All right, he shot her, he killed her. But again, we'll take a look at one more video. I'm gonna recap on this. Today, the 15th, um, reports came out in the afternoon that, um, Ati Ta- Tatiana Jefferson nephew saw her point a gun at the window before officer shot. Um, his defense is gonna be, of course, he saw the gun. Their offense is gonna be he acted improperly. So we're gonna see who's gonna win this case. We'll go to the next video. Hopefully no riots come out of, um, no riots or bullshit come out of this. There won't be no civil rights violation. I guess they'll try to find some, won't be no race, racist civil rights violations. You know what I mean? Won't be nothing involving race.
...was commissioned as a police officer in Fort Worth in April of 2018, so not too long ago.
And he has a right in the criminal investigation. I know Chief Kraus was talking about the major crimes unit. He's just gonna be just like any other suspect in a case. He has a constitutional right to remain silent. And he's probably talking to a lawyer. The lawyer's like, "Look, you need to get in there and resign. You need to keep your mouth shut. Any facts are gonna come out should come out during your criminal trial," which I expect.
What can he gain by not giving this statement and not talking to the investigators?
What could he gain by not giving this statement and not talking to the investigators right now?
Well, I mean, at, at the end of the day, I think what it would come down to is if he perceived a threat, right? He shot through a window, maybe he thought she had a gun, whatever that might be, it may justify a manslaughter charge versus a murder charge. But right now, based on what we know, if he doesn't provide that information to investigators, this is gonna be a murder charge and he's gonna-
So that right there tells you, they're gonna downgrade this to a manslaughter charge. The way he said about, um, he perceived a threat. So, um, them saying, the nephew saying she saw him point a gun, justifies this down to manslaughter charge. So the murder charge ain't sticking. So we're hearing the news real soon, like tomorrow, the 16th or 17th, that it's been downgraded to manslaughter.
The defendant's defense. And you tweeted about that earlier, uh, today. Uh, what do you make of the speed at which all of this is sort of moving? Uh, what, what, what could potentially happen here, you think?
Well, I didn't like what the police department did on Saturday with giving out the video of the body cam and then adding that gun photo at the end.
Without, yeah, without any context, uh-
See what they said? Giving out the body cam footage on Saturday or Sunday morning with the gun photo at the end with no context. And that struck me as strange, because they did give out a photo of a gun with no context. Want no body laying next to the gun, wasn't nothing. It's like one big joke almost, like this is one big joke. And, um, rewind one more time.
What, what could potentially happen here, you think?
Well, I didn't like what the police department did on Saturday with giving out the video of the body cam and then adding that gun-
And they gave out the video of the body cam, then a picture of the gun. But on Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon, they released the statement from the nephew saying she pointed the gun. The same day they gave out the body cam, which was this past Saturday, is the same day they knew she pointed the gun. Because they got a statement from the boy the same day. So I don't get why they didn't charge him with manslaughter then, instead of charging him with murder on Monday. It, it's like one big circus. Because beforehand, they knew she pointed the gun on Saturday, they knew it. And when we just saw that judge interviewing on Fox News, I'm pretty sure somebody there knew the same information. And still, that judge interview was before Tuesday, when information about, um, she pointing a gun at the police came out. I mean, it's, it's, it's strange how this works in they little TV land. That TV land they got going on over there, it's strange, but pay attention.
And photo at the end, without, yeah, without any context. Uh, the fact is, is yesterday, we had a lieutenant from the Fort Worth Police Department, I think maybe Chief Kraus may have been out of town. He should have done that press conference yesterday. He's doing it today, I'm asking the citizens, the police department's gonna do the right thing. Just give them some time. They want a state agency dealing with this, not the feds. The feds can't charge somebody with murder, only the state actors can, so they need to let that happen.
And they haven't had the Rangers in this case come in and take over this just yet. The longer that that, uh, takes, uh, does that, um, essentially take the case at all?
No, I mean, I think that, I mean, even what happened in, in Dallas, I mean, with Amber Gagga case, you know, everyone was talking about manslaughter. I was one of the first attorneys on the very front end saying, it should be murder. When she fired the shot, she intentionally done that, uh, to both of John. In this case, it's gonna come down, could this have been an accidental discharge? Did the officer freak out, finger come back and pull the trigger? We're not gonna know that unless we talk to the officer.
Except for being an attorney, you're also a police officer.
I am.
Well, no, it wasn't an accidental discharge. Clearly. But again, y'all, y'all listening to the same thing I'm listening to.
And the last thing I want you to, I wanted to ask you about here, uh, is the, we saw the video. Uh, he did not announce that he was Fort Worth Police. You said that was a critical error.
It was a critical error, because you're going into a, a situation called a welfare checking. This is not a burglar alarm call. The tactics, whether he was trained like this, which it appears it might have been that way, but you never approached the call like they did. And no police officer I've talked to today has agreed that he thought it was appropriate.
Okay, we will see what happens next. Uh, clearly, this is something that is happening very quickly, so we'll keep an eye on it.
It is happening very quickly. It is happening very quickly. What makes me wonder if they're gonna, even, is this even gonna go to court? Well, what makes me wonder if they're gonna be riots and whatnot? No planned riots, planned movie riots in Texas. Especially what that city councilman proclaimed, um, at work. He was at work when he proclaimed that. And then he proclaimed it online before that in a statement. So it is moving fast, um, hopefully, nothing bad happens. We don't see a lot of protest, protests, a lot of protest riots. So, you know, you know. All right, I'm ending the video here. Uh, this has been Awkward Currents, we're Awkward Entertainment, and I will see you.